I just, first I just want to thank everybody for the hard work. It's been amazing seeing kids back to school this week. And I just wanted to point, hope that when six to 12 will be able to move even further will be discussed at some point.
Tasha, could you just say your name?
Yep, Tasha Malvitz.
And Andrew.
1455 Avondale Drive.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we get a motion to accept the consent agenda that includes minutes from regularly scheduled meeting held Wednesday, December 9th, scheduled checks written December 2nd through January 4th, scheduled referendum checks written January, excuse me, December 2nd through January 4th, staff and hiring regulations, referendum late for absences. There's six co-curriculars that are being presented and the budget financial reports during the webinar.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. And motion in the second. Vandy Creek, aye.
Tronson, aye.
Haley, aye.
Vicky, aye.
Gary, an aye.
Okay, let's move on to penance report.
All right, thank you, Jay. Quite a few things to celebrate, so I was going a couple pages here. Administrative and district office teams over the winter break served meals to our families. As I've mentioned many times before, our school district food service team has been absolutely incredible. And we had an opportunity to recognize them last month, but again, they really have hit it out of the ballpark. So thank you to our food service team. In a way to say thank you to them, our food service team, members of the district administrative team, and district office staff served over 14,000 meals in one day to Ashwaban and school district families. It was great to see all the families over the holidays. A special thank you to our administrative and district office team members who via return their time to help. So please join the giving out team around the plaza, Caitlin. Holiday giving, the Ashwaban and School District continues to go above and beyond to meet the needs of our families, especially some of our families who are not as fortunate as some of us. And I wanted to share that the district social workers, we have one here tonight, organized multiple community programs that helped 414 children this year. They were all Ashwaban and School District children or their younger preschool siblings. So 414 students were helped out over the holidays. So just a huge shout out to our district social workers. And I know Andrea's here, she doesn't want to be recognized, but Andrea Bass, Richard and our school social workers, join me. Talking about gifts and new board gift. Jennifer and I were talking one day and we were looking for our board gobble. And we couldn't find it, we looked into all the offices, couldn't find one, looking storage. And one of our district office employees named Vern Doherty, and Vern is joining us tonight. Vern, could you say hi?
Hi, I'm here.
And so Vern Doherty heard about our need for a new one and Vern took it upon himself to make a brand new one. That tonight on behalf of Vern, we are presenting it to our school board. Amazing work, Vern. And again, Vern, anything else to add?
No, I just appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
So this is a present from Vern Doherty to our school board. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
As you know, Vern was very hesitant when I talked about this today to be recognized publicly. Students back in person, it was a very exciting, as Tasha has mentioned, for everyone to have our students back in person this week. I had the pleasure of spending time in each of our buildings this week. You've been filled in as building principal, Mr. Lucius as well, and others to fill in for staff. We could just feel the excitement and the energy of our students and what they bring to our school every day. So very exciting having our students back in our buildings. Also under our high school co-curriculars, under director Mr. Singer, the coaches and advisors, our high school, where did co-curriculars have been off to a great start? The students and their coaches and advisors have done amazing job of following the safety protocols. We're also excited to announce that we have been starting to bring in parents. Of our athletes for summer athletic events last week. Last week, Thursday, we had our wrestling parents and dance team parents in attendance for our first competition with parents. And lots of compliments from both sets of parents, very appreciative and the opportunity to watch your children compete. This week, we had our swim parents in for a meet as well. So congratulations to everyone involved. Today, or this week, is adult crossing guard week across the state of Wisconsin. I'd like to publicly thank all of our Ashwaban and School District adult crossing guards who do an amazing job all year long. I'd also like to thank Ashwaban Public Safety and Officer Jackie Dunlop, who we partner with for our adult crossing guard program. Typically, if you didn't know, we have a dinner together, celebrate adult crossing guard this week. Obviously with COVID, we're not able to do that. So today, Jackie Dunlop, Jennifer Bauer, and I personally delivered cards to all of our crossing guards at their post and just celebrated the great work that they do every day. So great time today. So thank you, crossing guards. And finally, for the month of December, I had the pleasure of emailing 206 Jaguar Excellence Awards to our staff. This brings our total to almost 700, 696 in just four months. Great work by everyone. This again is in year three with Jaguar Excellence Awards. And our staff continues to do a great job of knocking eyes on each other for the great work that they do every day. So great work, everyone. Any questions?
Okay, move on to our discussion items. First one is our wellness policy update. Caitlin?
Sorry, I turned my camera on for you. So, hi, everyone. I just want to quick echo what Kurt said about Vern. Vern was fantastic in getting all the food to the high school for that day. We gave out the 14,000 plus meals. They told me from festival, eat two pallets of food and I was like 15. So he transported a lot of food, which we wanted to then be able to carry over without him. Anyway, back to the wellness policies. We were just a little bit outdated in some of the stuff that we had in our policies. So I really wanted to go through and update it. Obviously, I haven't been in the district a long time, so I felt like it would be easier for me to just kind of start from scratch. I did keep a lot of the same things in there that were in there. They might just be worded a little bit differently so that we can measure them better. We're required by the DPR to submit a three-year contraintal assessment. And if they're measurable goals, it's much easier for me to go through and do the assessment. So that's why it's updated the way it is.
So basically, you just rerew it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple small changes in there, but it don't exist anything that is too different than what we had in the past.
Anybody else have any questions on it? I think it looks good.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the first read. And that'll be back in our February meeting for approval. Thank you, Caitlin.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, everybody's actually waiting for our next item here. Five-year budget projection comparisons.
That's not happening. Okay, I'm pulling up my screen right now.
Is it going?
It's not sharing, Jim.
Is he asking permission, Jeff?
No, not.
So while Keith is figuring that out, I just want to take his chance. I know that possibly Caitlin left already, but you know, think about walking into COVID, your first year into a new position as our food service director, and then all the obstacles that that year presents for her. She just has taken it and flown with it. And so we're really fortunate to have the great work that Caitlin does. So just wanted to recognize that.
Okay, so last, last meeting, we talked about state factors and how that affects the five-year budget. So in, in my plan this year is to do it in small increments, to keep ideas fresh and to use the five-year budget more as a comparative tool so we can think about the different decisions you're going to make and the different decisions others will make and how that's going to impact their budget as we get to May and June when we're finalizing our budget for the annual meeting. So I want to remind you again what the purpose of the five-year budget is. It's to show trends and to show the impact or be able to compare those options of decisions or things that change in our major factors in our budget. And to look more than just one year, we want to be strategic and look multi-year when we look at the impact of things and where we're going to go. We've been in a budget cutting mode for 20 years in this district. It's, it's just the way the state budget and the, the school district finance factors work that we're always working in a reduction and it's, it's challenging, but it's something that we've managed for 20 years and I anticipate we'll have to continue to manage and make those decisions and be fiscally conservative. So in this, in the presentation today, I'm going to have a base plan that we're going to base things, prepare things to. In the base plan, very similar to what we talked about at the last meeting as far as the base plan, no state factor increases. So it's really what I would say the worst case scenario. I don't anticipate the state reducing school funding, but with the changes in, in state finance, I'm not sure how much, if any, they're going to be able to give schools. So I think this is a good starting place. I think this is very conservative. My, if I were going to be picking a plan that thinks more likely this would not be it, I would, I would think we'll have some factor increase in either the revenue limit or per pupilate, something like that. But this is being conservative because I know there's a lot of uncertainty at the state level. I also have included 2% salary increases. CPI is a little less than 2%, and, but I think that's a, a good number. We did, we've done 2% when it's a little above and done 2% when it's a little below. So, so for all staff, I have factored in 2% salary increases. I have no change to staffing levels. So as we look at student counts, they're not really changing much anyway, but there will be some changes as I work through the detailed next year budget in staffing. There'll be some things that we'll look at, but that'll also be things that we consider if we need to balance the budget as well. I have 5% increase in health and dental insurance factored in. And from board members, as you see the monthly financial report, you know, we're having a much better year than that right now. So I'm optimistic that we're going to do better than that. But if you remember last year, we were having a much worse year for the first six months and then it really turned around as we hit January, February. And it can change quickly in health insurance. So I don't want to bet on having a 0% increase or something like that, but I think there's a good chance that that's where we're trending right now. And then I use the same cohort survival method of, of projecting students going forward. So you move the kids forward from one grade to the next grade, but you have factors based on historical. Do we see increases in the grade level? For example, sixth grade is a grade level where we typically see some increases as students who maybe went to a parochial school come to us from middle school. High school is another, freshman year, high school is another year where we see some increases above just moving eighth graders into freshman. So we look at that and we do that all based on most recent five years and project all our student counts. In reality, it's, it's very flat. We're to the point where we're seeing our resident student count stabilize. And actually, as you look all through the five years, we're seeing slight growth in our resident over the five years. And we're to the point where we, we've got to continue to have a significant number of open enrollment new students to fill the ones that are graduating. So we have, I believe it's in the seventies this year, number of students graduating that we have to replace just to stay equal on open enrollment. We're beyond the place where we were several years ago where we were seeing open enrollment growth every year because we have so many kids graduating each year that we need to replace. So let's say, what are we comparing, what are we going to compare in the next couple of slides? The blue bars you're going to see is going to be that base model we just talked about. There'll be orange bars that'll be a 0% increase in health insurance. So as I said, right now, we're trending at the 0%, maybe even a little bit of a reduction possibly in health insurance. So that'll show you what impact that has on our, on our plan. The other big, big factor I talked about was salary increases. So the gray bars are going to show a 1% salary increase instead of a 2. So a reduction in the amount of the increase, still an increase for staff, but a smaller increase. And then the yellow bar will be 0% health and a 1% salary increase. So you can see with those two together what the impact is and what that means as far as budget changes we would need to make. So what I want you to look at is how they're different and how close different options are or not. And once again, I want to be strategic and look multi-year. We need to be looking at decisions as long-term decisions, not one-year decisions. So the first graph I have is total expenditures. So the first set of bars is these current budgets. You see they're all the same. And then as we move forward, how does, how did total expenditures change with the assumptions that I gave you and went to three different models? So the base plan, we're seeing that total expenditure go up about $700,000 for next year. Just with 2% salary increase, 5% health and dental insurance increases. Pretty much all the other factors are held at no increase. So that, that's where we're seeing that. So if we can reduce those increases, so let's say we have a 0% health increase. That's what the orange bar shows you in the 21, 22 year. We reduce that, that increase by about $250,000, almost $300,000. So it's a significant increase. And I didn't plan this, but going from 2% to 1% on salary has a very similar increase in life or effect. If we reduce our health insurance or our pay increase, it has about that same effect of around $300,000. So that's why you see the gray bar and the orange bar very close to being the same line. And then if we do both, obviously, the yellow bar shows an even smaller increase in where we are. And this isn't, doesn't show revenues. This is just total expenditure. So you get a picture of the impact. So one thing I want to point out, the orange bar, if you look at all five years, I don't think it's realistic to think we're going to have a 0% increase in health insurance for five years. It's just not the trend. It's not what's happening in health insurance. But it is something that we work towards and it's one of those factors that we have some control. So if we start seeing health insurance trending up or we need to make reductions in health insurance as a board, you have the ability to influence that by making changes in health insurance coverage. So that's where your decision factor comes in. And as a board, we've made those decisions over the years. I think right now, we have, we have a very lean plan, but a very, it's a good benefit to track and retain, but it's, it's very cost effective. But if we get into budget problems, that's something as a board you can consider making adjustments to health insurance coverage. Realizing that when you take money out of people's pockets by changing health insurance, you basically not say reduce health insurance costs, you shift the shaft to the employee. So it, it hurts our attracting and retaining great employees, which drives our district and our outcomes. We have to be very cautious with that. And our health insurance committee would help you with those decisions if that's where you wanted to be. And this is one of those things that I would say that as a board, that's why we look at five years. You need to be looking longer term. And if we're going to make those changes, the process has typically been longer than one-year process. It's looking at possible changes, costing of the impact of those changes, meeting with employee groups, talking about, okay, here are some options, which ones are you more opposed to than others? Because no one wants to see any of them cut, but which ones are, are more acceptable than others and making those decisions. So that's a longer term change if you want to do something in health insurance. And to be honest, the only way you could do with the orange bar alone would be to make some planning changes at some point in the future and have those ready to go when we need them.
Have you done any, any, anything as far as when we started our clinic? Are we seeing, did you see a change in numbers there?
Definitely. The clinic, we do, every year, we do a review on the clinic and we do a return on investment for the clinic. So we can see how much we're saving and what the, where we are. And what we've done with the clinic, because we've been saving, our return on investment has been very strong with the clinic. We've expanded services and expanded hours so we can continue to compound those changes. So, so we look at it because we pay for those services, basically all really rated the providers, that it's much more cost effective than if someone goes to a doctor's office and does that, those things at a private clinic. So, so, so we, we are doing that. We are monitoring that. We meet with Bellin quarterly and we go through all of, all of the services that we're doing, the effectiveness of them, how the utilization is, we're doing the right hours and all those things. So an example, I can give you a change we made this year. This year, we have always had our health provider starting early in the morning before staff started so that someone could bring a child in or themselves in if they thought someone was sick and get, and get medical attention and not miss work. We shifted our medical provider to later hours and we have on two days a week, brought in a lower level medical provider who can provide that acute care right away for something. So like someone, a child has pink eye, to diagnose it and take care of that right away. So it's a lower cost person in that role. And we take our higher cost person, who are people are using as primary care physician, and move her hours back. And, and we're able to adjust this. We're able to make it more cost effective that way. So we're always looking at things like that. For example, we added physical therapy seven years ago because the cost to go to a private clinic for physical therapy was a lot more than the cost to have it provided on site. So we're always looking at where we can save. We've expanded hours several times. We've added online or, or virtual visits to our medical providers so that staff can do, especially during this COVID season when they're, if they were working from home and had some symptoms, they could call in and do a, a virtual visit. Now, if they're in their building and they just need a 10-minute visit, they can do a virtual visit during, when their students at the elementary or at specials, they could do the virtual visit without having to go see the provider. So we're trying to implement all those different things at the clinic to make them more cost effective. Thank you. Any other questions on, on the total expenditure slide? Okay, so the more meaningful slide here is the budget cuts needed. So as I mentioned, every year, we've been cutting budget. Every year I've been in the district, we've had to cut budgets to balance it. It's just part of the way the school funding formula works. So what this graph shows is the blue bar shows if we keep the assumptions the same, we have to cut over $500,000 to balance our budget. So there is no lot to cut other than staffing at this point because we've been cutting for so long. There just aren't things to cut. So if we don't, if we continue with the pay increases, we aren't able to get a lower health insurance renewal, we've got to look at staffing and look at where we go. And, and to be blunt, we're to the point where those cuts really would need to be affecting class size because the support services and we've seen it in previous presentations I've done in previous years at the annual meeting. When we compare how much we have in the classroom as far as expenditures as a percent of our cost per student or in other districts, we have a much higher percentage of our cost, the teacher in the classroom, and less on, on the support services. So we're running really thin. So it's really hard to do anything other than, than cuts that are going to affect class size. Every year, as an administrative team, the worst job we have is to go through budget and try to come up with ideas that don't affect class size places where we can make reductions and try to balance. So that could be finding additional grants to help us continue things that we're doing. But in most cases, it's looking at where we can make reductions. So if we look at next year alone and say, we're able to get a 0% health insurance. As I said, we're trending in that direction. That seemed realistic. That total amount reductions, it goes down to about $300,000 to a little less than $300,000. So that health insurance, doing well on health insurance, having a healthy year is great because staff are healthy and able to work, but it's also great from a financial standpoint. So it's a real win-win when we can do that. That's why our wellness program is important. That's why we work on those things. And then the same thing, if we would do a 1% pay increase instead of a 2%, that saves that $300,000. And it's important to look on, on the pay increase in particular over the five years. You see the impact of just doing that pay increase differential. You see how different the gray bar is from the blue bar as we go farther out, the difference makes. So it's important to think that way. If we would do both, you see we're, we're down to a very small amount of cuts for this coming year. So it makes life a lot easier. And as I said, we don't know where our health insurance could go. Our health insurance could have a negative increase this coming year, possibly. It, it's not very common, but we've had that a couple of times in my time in the district. So there's a good chance in the way it's trending right now, it's not out of the realm of possibility. So I don't have anything else to present here on this other than just want you to see this and know the impact these factors have. We're not, not making any decisions on these things now. What we will do in the next steps in our budget, as an administrative team, we're going to start meeting on our budget, start working through the details and coming up with a staffing plan and come back to you in late spring with potential budget reductions and anything where any impact on staffing and any impact on other things. And we'll come back to you, every year, we've come back with a balanced budget proposal in the April, May timeframe. And that, that would be our plan right now. And I wanted you to have this information and then watch what's left. As I look at this, is there another set of factors or something else you want me to do? Try and keep these short, 10, 15 minutes on budget each, each meeting rather than having a big, long, hour-long presentation. Is there something else you want me to do in analysis on or comparison of for a future meeting?
The only other thing that I was thinking is, and I know you mentioned it earlier, is the possibility of either doing a referendum or continued funding for basically our budget here or what the impact would be of taking money from our fund balance.
And I'll, I'll talk about the fund balance one right now because I think that we can talk a little about that. Not the, the impact of taking money out. I will just let you know, our fund balance, we've seen go down over the last three years because we use fund balance to do, finish the high school remodeling project in the cafeteria and we've had two years of health insurance increases above what we had projected. So that reduces our fund balance and that happens. So our fund balance is at about 15% of expenditures. Historically, we've been in that 23 to 27% range. So, so our fund balance isn't lower, dangerously low, but it's below where it's been historically where we targeted to keep it. So I get concerned, we don't want to, one of the reasons that I show these accumulating deficits on here is that's the impact of using fund balance because now your deficit is twice as big the next year and twice as big the following year if you don't balance it with budget cuts. So that's the concern I have with, with fund balance in here. And that's one of the reasons a, a multi-year model is important to create that understanding.
Right, is because using fund balance is going to be one-year shot. It's going to take that deficit for that one year, the next year, that deficit is going to be terrible.
The next year, you have to, the deficit you don't have next year, plus the previous year's deficits. You have to make double the cuts, basically.
That's why I don't think my, our, my year could ever done it.
No, we have, other than doing that high school one-time project like that, like the high school remodeling project, one-time projects out of fund balance makes sense. Or I think we've done some energy savings projects out of there makes sense because they, the returns come back. So, but I don't think balancing our operational budget, our fund balance is a smart, long-term.
And we've always balanced our budget. One way or another, it's we've made some difficult decisions that we've had to make and come through it and, and everybody's been mostly happy.
So is this, is this why some districts have done those type of referendums? Because they're trying to avoid class size changes and things of that nature? Is that kind of, I mean, have we seen that in the districts surrounding us?
Yes, so that's why I believe the numbers, we talked about it during the last referendum, numbers are in the 80% or 85% of districts have done ongoing referendum to exceed the revenue limit, operational. When we did our operational referendum, remember, it was to add the student support services and some other things with the, with the construction projects related costs. So we added costs and didn't refer. What those districts have done is they've not added costs, they just added the referendum so they didn't have to make as large a cut. So I think you're right on, Jenny, that, that's what you see in other districts. And that's where, that I talked about, the state funding structure for schools sets up a deficit model. Every year, you're making cuts and that's how some districts have addressed it. Because it, it's the point where, and Kurt will tell you, it is really difficult as we try to come up with ideas to balance it. Our administrative team worked really hard on trying to not impact students and come up with budget reduction ideas. And it is a challenge. Every year, it's the worst part of our job trying to come up with those ideas.
What percentage of our budget is staffing? It's like 80, 85?
85.
Okay, so it's, there's not a lot of other places to cut.
I mean, I would, I just, I, I, I know what happens when class size is very important. And at the same time, we have to understand that you cut and cut and cut and then, you know. So these are, thank you for all the information because these are important decisions looking for the future.
And we've saved it. We've, we've taken so much money over the years from technology and from the maintenance budget. That's basically where we've robed in the past.
But, but that, and that's been kind of short-term.
And then the other thing is also, but we've also made incremental improvements in our maintenance all the way along. So we don't hit that big giant box that's going to really hurt us.
And I'll tell you, as a board, you guys should be proud. We don't have deferred maintenance. Most districts in the state have deferred maintenance projects, things sitting out there that should have been done. They're getting more expensive as they put them off, but they just don't have the money for it. We've made those decisions, those tough decisions and made budget reductions and maintain our buildings. And that's why when you walk in our buildings, you don't realize they're 50-year-old buildings. They don't look like if they're maintained. We don't have leaky roofs or bad windows or all those things. The boilers that aren't keeping the building warm, we've taken care of that. And we've maintained that asset that community gave us and that's why we have quality schools. And I think we've maintained the class size too, and that's why we're a district of choice where we have so many open enrollment students coming home. People want to come to our district because our class sizes are small.
Thank you, Keith.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Keith.
So I just had a, since we're like, you know, one year into already having an operational referendum. So if we did, uh, so you can do another operational random, referendum because it's just two different amounts. And then I guess in order to continue those, could you ever get them on the same schedule? Or would you, I don't want to keep going every two to three years for another renewal of the other operational referendum. for another renewal of the other operational referendum.
Right, so there's a couple, it's a good question, Michelle. There's a couple of options. You could run, have different referendums that mature in different years and then keep them separate and keep it. So we have the student support services referendum as one, and we have an operational one. And they mature on different years because you can pick when you do an operational. It can be three, four, or five years of the common lengths that you see. So you could set that up. But there's no reason you couldn't do a referendum for two years and have it match up with the expiration of the student support services referendum and then combine them going forward. The downside to that would just be the risk if the referendum fails, are we going to cut all the student support services and make all those budget cuts? And those are things that you have to be aware of. The last option would be, what we did this last time for the student support services was a non-recurring referendum, meaning it has an expiration date. So the other option is what's called a recurring referendum, which has no expiration date. So you don't have to keep coming back every three years or every five years for the same month. You do a recurring referendum that just says, okay, going forward, we're going to do this amount. And it locks it in, adds it into the revenue limit permanent. So that's the third option. So you can keep them separate, you can tie them also to combine, or you can do a recurring referendum, but either or both of those separate.
But the danger of doing a recurring operation of a referendum is just like taking money from your fund balance. Because you're still, you have that deficit, but you're putting it on the taxpayers.
Right.
And every single year, you're going to be putting in more money on the taxpayers. And ultimately, if it's recurring, it's either going to be a percentage or it's going to be a dollar amount.
The recurring are dollars. So it becomes that dollar amount. So you fix the problem, but now the following year, you start having that deficit slowly creep up.
Yep.
So that's the downside to the recurring is that amount stays fixed forever. It just gets added into your revenue limit. So then at some point theoretically in the future, you consider going to referendum again and say, okay, we've got to the point where we're touched with. So what I've seen districts do is they do the recurring for more than what they need to balance the current budget and maybe do those deferred maintenance projects or some other, some other capital-type projects for the first couple of years. And then they're able to make it longer before they have to, would have to consider another referendum.
And so what is this based on? Like last state budget, we did have an increase per student. I mean, I guess looking at this next budget, are you hearing, I guess there's not much. But like in the future, are you still assuming that it would continue as it has the past 20 years? Where we're just getting very minimal increases? That's still not enough?
So this is, the analysis you saw is based on no increase at the state. So I, last time I, when I presented, I showed the different options of what the state might do. So we had some of those things. So really, you can look at the two together and say, okay, if we have a 0% health insurance increase, we need to cut $300,000. But when you look at last month's presentation, if the state gives us $150 per student on the revenue limit, it offsets that $300,000 and we wouldn't have a huge budget cut. So there's a lot of those factors to go in to think about. And the reason I don't combine them all in one presentation is now you start not knowing which factors influencing things. And to me, the strategic side of this is one factor, what is the impact of one factor change? So you can see what's important. So, but you're right, Michelle. I, as far as what the state's talking about, I haven't got a clear message from the state. I've been talking to our state representatives and they're very good at communicating with me as things are known. But right now, the state budget is really up in the air. The governor hasn't even presented his. I believe he presents his state budget in early February. Then the Senate and the House will come back with theirs. And then there'll be some negotiation. Hopefully, we'll find a middle ground and it'll be resolved quickly. But I'm not optimistic of that because of the separation of power that I would expect that we won't have a state budget until July. So I, that's, I hope it's sooner. But typically, once they make their presentations, I can take, okay, here's what the governor's budget looks like. Here's what the Senate's budget looks like. And we can do comparisons of that. And that'll be a future meeting once those are both out there. And then we can maybe use whichever one's the lower one, which I would expect to be the Senate budget. Then we use that as kind of the floor instead of the space that has knowing. All right, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Michelle.
Hey, reopening plan update.
You bet. So I want to thank everyone who's joined us, some of you in person and many of you virtually. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to our discussions. Certainly, we are always entertained by Mr. Lucius and his budget projections. And so appreciate that presentation all the time. Also want to thank our school board. It's been really hard work throughout this whole COVID piece. And I'm really proud of the work that our board has done and the work that you continue to do. So thank you for your efforts. I wanted to just update all of you, school board and our public, on our reopening plans for second semester as we move forward here at the end of July and for the rest of the school year. We've said all along, and we've been pretty consistent in that message, that our goal is to have our students back in person. That continues to be our goal. I just want to real quickly take a minute or two to talk about the steps we've taken over the past several weeks to make this happen. You guys have overheard me over and over again, talk about our phase approach. We've been trying to be very methodical in how we move forward. Keep our students safe, our staff safe, our community safe, but also do a good job of educating our children along the way. So we started with phase five, bringing in our students in 4K to 5. Half of them back on Monday, half of them came back on Tuesday. Today, we had all of our 4K 5 students in person. And what a great day today. And great to see all the kids in our buildings. We started our secondary students, grade 612, in our hybrid platform that we had from our reopening plan from last September. Students in this plan are attending in school every other day in person while learning remotely on the opposite days. One of the things that we've been reflecting on, we continue to reflect on, we reflected from last spring to do our reopening plan for this past September. But we also reflect why we're working now, what things are going well, what things can we do. We listen to input from parents, listen to input from the board. And so we sat down, talked about what are some things we can do better in the hybrid format to help with our 612 students. And one of the things our teachers are working on at the high school level is they've added time at the beginning of each period to connect with the kids who are on remote. So let's say, for example, it's a green day and Ryan is a yellow student. At the beginning of every one of our periods, Brian has the opportunity to connect with his teacher, bring all the remote kids in at the beginning of every class group for 10 or 15 minutes, Dirk, right? Roughly.
Five, 10 with you.
And that's happening at the beginning of every class group. And so it's just another approach, another way that we've done to really try to connect with our kids even on a day that they're remote. So not only when they're in person, but also connecting with the kids when they're remote as well. So we've heard that from parents, want to have those kids more engaged when they're not in front of us. And so that's just another step that we've taken. And I appreciate it, Mr. Rebbins and Ms. Husseck and the administrative team and teachers for doing a good job of implementing that this week. And from what I understand, it's going pretty well, right, Dirk?
It has, it has.
We've also hired, as you know, many long-term subs that are committed to Ashlavan. We did have one take a long-term returning leave in another district for the rest of school year or for the next 12 weeks. And then we had one send to Florida. But we are still in good shape around our subs. Doesn't mean we're still not looking for more. And but we are continuing to recruit that. We have those subs in our buildings every single day, working with kids. And some of those positions are filled every day. Some of them are currently filled. And we continue to work with those long-term subs. We also have added additional PPE for students and staff. Spent some time over the holidays adding more Plexiglas shields, more PPE for our staff and students. So we feel pretty good about that. We also are currently working, and this is, Keith has just done a wonderful job with this, working with our local healthcare providers on a vaccination plan for our Ashlavan School District staff. Some of our staff, if you may not even aware, have already started to be vaccinated under, that fall under phase 1A. So some of them are nurses, are health aides and other professionals. But we have fall under phase 1A of the vaccination plan. So some of them have already been vaccinated or at least have the first shot of vaccination. And Keith is working closely with our local healthcare providers to work closer on that. In fact, we're even going to expand, I don't know what that number is, Keith, that fall under the 1A.
We got 38 more today, so we're going to be at about 55, I believe, or close to 55. But we've been able to get approval on it 1A, so they're getting their shots. Right now, a lot of them already have their shots yesterday today.
Feel good about that. So great work there. Most school staff fall under the category of 1B, which is the next phase, 1B. There's a large group of population of people that fall under 1B. And so firefighters, police and all those, so how they have to kind of shift that out. You listened to Dr. Rice comment the other morning. He talked about the police and if fire, fireworks were going to be starting next week. Is early, Keith, that's.
I've heard, and it's not official, you have to test the plan.
So again, that designation plan is in place and working to take care of our Ashlavan School District employees.
So just to add to that, so you know, and I want staff to hear if they're listening, we have worked with both of the major networks that we work with. And we will have plans in place so that it's not just when this happens, now we got to scramble to get done. I'm already getting them the information. So all our staff are in their books, ready to go. So the day that 1B goes, if they're allowing teachers to get vaccinated, our staff can get things scheduled. I want to get it set up and not be scrambling at the last minute. We're trying to get a plan in place, give the staff the ability to get vaccinated as quickly as possible. And that's kind of a concern for our staff. So we want to get that provided in plan so it rolls as quickly and efficiently as we can.
So one of the points to that, Keith, talking about is most of our staff for the healthcare providers, they have a legumibellum plan. Some of you are probably familiar with that. But we might not have a blind purveyor plan. And so you have to set up those plans in order to get that vaccination scheduled. So again, Keith's starting to really make sure.
And the networks have to pre-qualify you to make sure that people who fall under 1A, right now are getting a new one, 1B, that you're really 1B. So they're asking us for information to verify so that someone off the street doesn't just come in and say, I'm a teacher, I should get, I need a vaccination. No, you're not going to be able to do it because there's a verification between the medical providers and the district to make sure this is our list of people who should qualify. And then they send out the request to the employees saying, okay, now you can schedule this.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So I have been approached by a couple of other substitute teachers that just are questioning, what, like, what does that? Obviously, they're not, they don't fall under like the districts. We're employees, but we're not.
You're employees. We are working for you. All our subs get the vaccination as well because you're just as important to keeping kids in school and we want to keep you safe. So we're doing that, we're doing it for due duty, we're doing it for custodians. We're trying, all of those are included. When you look at 1A for the hospitals, the custodian, the facility people are also on 1A at a hospital. So we are including everyone and we're pushing, and I can't promise anything because the state hasn't finalized their rules. But our, what we're moving forward is everyone gets it and our subs are definitely included.
Okay.
We just talked about that today. A good question. So again, that designation plan is under place, really feel good about that. We will continue to wear masks at school along with providing opportunities for mask breaks throughout the day. Students on the last three days, again, just like they did last September, are just doing an amazing job with the mask. And really proud of our students and the work that they're doing there. We've also added some CISA testing sites for staff. This allows us, we are partnering with CISA 6 and CISA 7. And there are different sites in our area where staff can go and get the results less than 24 hours. So what that does is that provides us an opportunity for us to have a shortened amount of time for our staff to be quarantined and we can get staff back in the buildings quicker. So very impressive. We've already started this week. Jennifer and Nancy Pierce lead that in regards to getting the staff set up for the appointments. And it's a drive-up piece. And again, our staff is already taking advantage of it. We're very excited about how quick that turnaround is, again, less than 24 hours. So really proud of that. Second semester starts on Monday. Our 4K 5 students will continue to be in person every day. The question is around our students in 612, continue to be in a hybrid approach for a couple more weeks in the second semester or start the second semester, everyone back. The board has asked me to do some homework and I have done that. I know that Mr. Rebbins has as well and Ms. Husseck. And really talking to other districts who have been in person all year, right? And what are the pros, what are the cons? What are the things that they would do differently if they were in our position now? And so really good conversations. A common theme that we heard from the districts who have been in our area, whether it be in the Fox Valley area or closer to us, that have been in school all year long, that they shared is if you go from the hybrid model to 612 level to all students coming back, you're going to have a significant amount of more students in quarantine. It's just going to, it's just going to happen. And so they wish they would have been more forthcoming with their parents about that problem. Because I'll give an example. If Kevin is sitting in English class and we're in a hybrid model, maybe only one or two students, because of ability to social distance with us, maybe only one or two of the kids in that class have to be quarantined. If we bring everyone back and we have 28 to 30 kids in a classroom, what those other school districts have found is now we're quarantining seven to eight students. So just, I want to be upfront with our parents and teachers and everyone that we're going to have more kids quarantined if we bring everyone back. It's just going to be part of the issue. You have kids closer together, you're going to have more kids in quarantine. So they said, Kurt, if there's anything you should share, because that's one of the questions I asked, they said, share that to parents. Make sure parents understand upfront that you're going to have more kids in quarantine if you come back. There are pros and cons, right? Pros is kids are in school, they're in school every day, all that is great. But there is opportunities for kids to be possibly quarantined more. Some districts have kids, some of the same kids quarantined five and six times. So you're talking 10 days in a quarantine or 14 days in a quarantine. Now, there are weekends in there. You could be talking 40 to 50, 60 days of school. So please understand that there, the possibility of kids missing a lot of school because of quarantine as well. So again, we will still work with those kids remotely and all that. But please understand there's, there's pros and cons, Dirk.
Kurt, can I add one thing on that? When we talked about quarantine, I think the last meeting, we talked about the reduction in the quarantine time. The county health department and the school nurses association have all completely done a 180 on that. And we're back to 14 days because we can't maintain that social distancing. So I think parents need to know that and as a board, you need to know that, that if someone's quarantined now, if they're exposed, it's 14 days, not the 10 days we talked about at the last meeting. And that's been county health departments and everybody's taken a full step back on that and said, that isn't working unless you can guarantee social distancing. And we can't.
And that's across the board, just so everyone knows that. The school districts in our area, Fox Valley areas, who are, have everyone back, have all gone back to the 14-day. And it's really been a push from either the Outing County Health Department, Grand County Health Department, Pure Health Department. Everyone has gone back to the 14-days versus having, sticking with what we introduced last month of the 10-days. Thank you, Keith, for bringing that up. So again, there are advantages, pros and cons. The advantage of us coming back right away first and second semester is we have our kids in our building. We all want that. There's no doubt about it. If you see the energy in the, in the schools, you see the energy from the teachers and from the kids, there's no doubt, everybody wants that. That's what we want. We've been very clear from day one that we want a very methodical approach to making sure. Now, not everyone's agreed with our methodical approach, and I get that. But we've been very, I think, very sequential, very chronological, very, in our approach of trying to make sure that we have long-term sustainability. I said it last month and I'll say it again tonight. Our goal is to be in person as we are now until June 10, right? That is what we want. And but we want to do it in a right approach. And so there are some thoughts. Some of the other districts are not starting all kids back 612 till the end of February. Some are not starting till the end of the third quarter. Some are starting mid-February. Again, we talked about this board here at the last month that we would be, have all kids 612 start second semester. So again, I'm just sharing it with what you guys asked me to do, okay? I touched it out for all of you, the board, our GADA criteria that goes back to November 23rd. Clearly, we saw a huge spike in the month of November. You look at our core indicators, we're all 1300 in mid, you know, right around Thanksgiving time. It has dropped down. If you look at like December 1st, I think it was at 978. And then it has gone drastically down the whole month, right? We've seen it, we're all excited, we're all feeling really good about it. And it's clearly keep dropping, continues to drop and got all the way down to a low of January 4th, which was 493, phenomenal, right? We all feel much better about that. That's exactly, it's. That's exactly, it's starting to creep back up, doesn't mean it's going to trend poorly. But if you guys remember, I consistently have been saying, I'm less worried about a number and more worried about are we trending or trending down or staying the same. If you look from basically roughly mid-December to now, it's roughly stayed about the same. It's pretty flat. There's up a little bit, down a little bit, up a little bit, but it really has been pretty consistent um, since mid-um, December. We look at mid-December, I'm looking at my December fourteenth, December six fifty-seven, today we are at six fifty-four. So it really has pretty flattened up. The question is, are we going up a little bit from Christmas? There was a big talk, we'd have this huge uptake from Thanksgiving. Didn't happen, right? Are we seeing an uptick from Christmas? Not sure yet. Right now, I would say maybe a little bit, but not too bad. The other pieces on the data that's in front of you is, and it's on our dashboard, everyone, so please uh, look at that. Again, kudos to Jamie Everbeck, our COVID data king, um, in providing that information to all of us. Student absences um, have ranged from about six, five or six percent to eight percent. Today, they were eight percent, yesterday, they were five percent. Again, these are COVID. And then the staff ones, teaching staff is at five percent today. Let me go back, the student absence one, you guys approved at the last board meeting for that to be at thirty-three percent. If you remember back to that and say, that's kind of that engine check line, we start getting nervous of, of, as, as we start growing up is that, you know, again, this is going to just change overnight, it's probably going to be a gradual. And do we see that going to from eight today to fifteen to eighteen to twenty-five? You know, I think we'll have some way to project that and predict whether we're, we're heading in the wrong direction or heading in the right direction. The staff ones, you guys approved last month at fifteen percent absences. Today for the teaching staff, we're at five percent and non-teaching staff, we're at eight percent. So again, both spots in good shape. So we're in a good place on both of those. Again, the talk is, you know, how do we then continue to stay with that? And do we start off the semester, do you, you guys asked me to watch the numbers closely. You know, right now, we're looking good. I don't see, unless there's some major fallout, I, I figure we're in pretty good shape, so. We continue to monitor the data, we're still recruiting again, everyone, more substitute teachers. Um, we did put it out there for parent volunteers. Uh, we did have nine parents who signed up and five have completed the paperwork that are ready to be volunteers in our cafeterias and playgrounds. So those of you who are still interested, um, be thinking about that if you are interested. Again, we had nine sign up originally, five of those nine have, have the paperwork completed and are ready to go. Uh, we appreciate everyone who has signed up. So I guess I'm looking for questions from you or reaction from all of you.
Yeah, any other areas that you're concerned about? Sounds like we have the teachers and the administration staff, you know, kind of work out for volunteers or substitutes. Is there any other area of concern that we need to?
Well, I, I just said, the whole idea of, of, the concern for me, Paul answered your question, is how helpful, because nobody wants to get, their kids finally get back into school. Nobody wants to receive that call from the office staff or from the nurse saying that Paul has to be quarantined now, right? And so I'm asking, I'm pleading with our parents to be respectful. Our office staff, our nurses, our health aides are just doing their job, right? They're doing what they have to do. Please be respectful when they call and are cooperative. Um, nobody wants kids to be quarantined, nobody wants our kids not to be in school. But we're going to have that, so please help us. So that, that's our huge concern because um, it's very challenging for our staff if parents refuse to pick kids up because they have to be quarantined, right? And so, uh, we don't always know that, you know, because all of a sudden just a kid comes to school and there's, that's a positive. They don't, they're not always forthcoming, and so then we react and then we, you know, call, make the calls and send kids home, so. So parents, please help us, we're in this together. Any other questions?
Just curious, what's the percentage of kids, students that are in person and those who are tested virtual?
Yeah, so it's a good question, Mike. Um, I would say that we did change, we did change some. So I, to kind of clarify Mike's question, he's asking, last fall, we had about eighteen percent of our student population was chose virtual, virtual. Um, we had about, maybe about seventy kids choose now. Remember that, we gave them till December sixteenth to make that decision. We had about that many kids choose, so about a one percent reduction in the virtual side. So I'd say we were about seventeen, sixteen, seventeen percent of our kids are still virtual and about a one, one half percent chose to not come in person.
Good question.
Mr. Waters is right on, we've got twenty-six hundred and sixty-two kids attending in person. That's exactly eighty-three percent, so I support Mr. Waters. So seventy percent are virtual.
Yeah, once in a while you just get lucky, you know?
Um, just a question on the hybrid, you know, what's, as far as, you know, I'm trying to think of what, as far as teaching and the level of teaching and maybe interest. You know, is it really, is it still not the same level as what we would be at, obviously being in person every day? Is it just, I don't know what that looks like because you have one, one day they're in, one day they're out. You know, what does that look like for those kids?
Do you want me to join? Sure, I, I think first before Dirk, Dirk, I think we all agree, Mike, that the instruction is always better face to face, right? That's the world, that's what we do well, that's what we're really good at. Um, so I don't know that anyone would argue with the fact that we think it's better to be in person, right? What we, the one concern we have, and I'll let Dirk speak to it, is the inconsistency. And we worry about the kids who get quarantined, right? And, and when I heard those numbers from these other districts, I was like, wow, I guess I didn't think of that, right? And, and so that's the one concern I have. Consistency is probably the most important part of effective instruction, right? And the most effective way for kids. And so if they know that it's going to be consistent and I'm not going to all of a sudden be quarantined for ten days. Um, so that's one concern. Again, I'm not saying we shouldn't come back, Mike, at all. I'm, I'm just saying that consistency piece is important to me.
You know, and I'm not opposed to the hybrid, I'm just wondering how much are they, you know, how much are we losing out with time, you know, staying with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. As Curtis said a lot, you know, our, our number one goal is student achievement. And so our number one priority in meeting that goal is safety and health of students and staff, so. And that's, that's that balance we're trying to establish here. And, and again, I think we all agree that the best instruction for most kids takes place face to face. On the other hand, as Curtis said, what, as adults and kids, we need is consistent and predictable. Um, so if a student knows tomorrow, I'm going to go to school or tomorrow, I'm going to be home. And here's who I'm going to be and here are the expectations. And this is who's going to be sitting next to me and this is who my teacher is going to be. Uh, that's a scenario in which kids can learn really well, whether it's every day or every other day. Where we have to be careful, and I had some conversations with, with administrators in some of the other districts in Eastern Wisconsin. That was the struggle that they had uh, for, for districts that are in person every day of that consistency and predictability of not necessarily knowing, if I get to school tomorrow, who's going to be sitting next to me, who's my teacher going to be, am I going to get sick, things like that? And uh, we had some long discussions with, with some other principals about that. And uh, you know, the consistency of our model every other day versus an inconsistent everyday model. Um, neither is perfect, but ours is certainly more predictable. Um, that's a big deal for a lot of kids. This is particularly an issue that obviously in my role, I worry a lot about, about equity. Um, um, the quarantines of students in many of the districts that, that go full-time don't necessarily get spread out evenly. Um, certain kids in big classes tend to end up being quarantined more. And those tend to be certain kinds of classes, just based on age and the students and whether it's a required class or an electric class. Um, and that's, that's a concern especially for students who struggle a lot, you know, that, that issue of being quarantined more than once and that inconsistency and unpredictability. Um, so that's, that's a, that's, that is a big concern um, in terms of those kinds of things. Um, so on the other hand, um, and there's a lot of thanks to staff and Jill, please look on this one. We spent a lot of time this year um, developing plans and processes for good remote construction, remote instruction. You know, uh, the Google meets, uh, use of Google classrooms, use of some of those kinds of technology things. Um, frankly, ah, and this is kind of a, kind of a change for me. And you all know that I was pushing for in-person as much as anybody for months and months. As I've seen the data start to come out from, from second quarter, I'm really impressed at how much kids have learned and how engaged they have been. Certainly, they haven't necessarily liked it. Um, but we have a vehicle that works pretty well remotely. And I think that if we can balance for a little while in-person and remote and kind of, kind of use the benefit of both worlds, the remote in terms of social distancing and health and the in-person every other day in terms of quality in-person construction, uh, instruction, I keep saying construction, sorry, uh, for labs and cooking things and, and those kinds of experiences, we're in a pretty good place right now. Um, I don't want to do that forever. But um, I, I, I'd, I'd encourage us to think about at least continuing that for, for a while. Whether a while means a few weeks or a month or so, um, so that we can really start to make some gains in terms of the in-person experiences that kids can have. Um, I think that's probably something worth considering strongly, especially since of the high school at least. And this is very high school specific, hence that we're going to start a whole new semester in, in, in a week and a half. Um, so already there are going to be some pretty significant upheavals for kids in terms of consistency and expectations and who's sitting near them and things like that. And uh, and we have a vehicle that they're, that they're familiar with now. And uh, so long round about waiting your answer. Best instruction would be every day in front of teachers if we knew everybody could be every day in front of teachers. In, in the absence of that, I think we have a pretty good system and I'm really proud of staff for that.
Can I add to that? I just wanted to give Dirk and his staff and, and Chris and, and the middle staff a ton of credit around collaborative time and leveraging technology tools that they know have been really successful in remote. Because when as a teacher, when you're thinking about, you know, a two-day plan where you know half your kids are going to be in person and half are going to be remote, right? You then can think about those tools that really could leverage for when you're in person and, and really doing that well in person. And then when the kids are remote, you have that other tool set that you really can leverage. And the collaboration time that we provided, um, Wednesday morning, all, all that has really been just a life, it's been awesome that for them to really hone in so that, because it's going to be different. Teaching in person is way different than teaching remote. So you have to kind of plan for both separately and it's, and how that comes together. So that's, the hybrid has, has been really good. A part of it is, is that we've really provided teachers with tool and, tools and time and to do that, and that's been, that's been a success.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question or not follow a comment right now?
Um, not yet. So. When we sat here a month ago and we had our last meeting and this board room was packed with parents. And we had said, and they had agreed basically that we'd be going back to school this past Monday. And then we'd start full-time at the beginning of the second semester. And I, I, I can't, I don't see the numbers that say that we should not be doing that. I don't see, they're, they're not shocking numbers here that says that we should not be going back full-time for all our kids. And that's what I want to see, at the beginning of the second semester, starting everybody back and we go from there.
I agree. You guys tell us, I mean, we'll, we'll go forward. I just want to be upfront, you guys asked me for information. Yep, you guys gave, asked me to give the information, we investigated, we did what you asked. This is the information we came up with. We want kids, we want our kids every day to be in school. But we also know, based on the information we got from the schools who are in person every day, there's going to be a significant amount of kids being uh, under quarantine. Um, and knowing that, parents, we need your help to do that. And, and, and be cooperative in that, that it's, we don't want to do it, but we're going to have that, it's going to happen.
I think that message has got to get out there and get out there clearly that people understand that, you know. Um, so us as a district are telling the parents that yes, we are going to open up to everybody at the beginning of the second semester. But you have to understand that your kids could be quarantined at any time. And it may not be their fault, but if there's somebody that they're around, then we have to take those precautions.
Know that we're doing everything we can as a district to provide social distancing, right? We are doing everything possible to get, we are wearing the mask, we are hand sanitizing, we are doing all the mitigation factors. I think better than anybody, to be honest with you, again, maybe a little bit slight in my opinion. But, but I think we're doing a phenomenal job with that and, and have continued to do that. Our classrooms are only so big, right? And so when we bring everyone back, we're going to have kids in times where we're not going to be able to provide the, where we don't have social distance because we're less.
But then we'll be wearing masks.
I think we'll be wearing masks.
And I think so some kind of a communication, sounds like it's going to go up to parents to ask for their cooperation and, and involvement in that. And, and perhaps it should also be said that pandemic is not over. And just because we're going to bring kids back into the buildings, that doesn't mean that kids should have parties on a, on a weekend and fifty kids with no masks are allowable. That they still need to keep doing what they have been doing for the last however many months to, to mitigate that. Because if they want to keep their kids in school, you know, we, we sit up here, we can't, we can't keep the kids in school. Parents can keep the kids in school by keeping their kids safe, keeping, you know, the, the staff safe and, and the teachers safe.
Yeah, and Brian, I want the parents to know though, it's obviously, and, and we're doing everything on our end to do all the things that are necessary, the social distancing, the mask, the washing, the disinfecting, every, um, we spent a lot of money, I talked about additional P P, we have a gun now that's disinfected, um, that's for each building. And so for example, if there was a breakout in a classroom at Parkview, we found out about it. We cleared out that classroom, we can spray that classroom, disinfect it, and it's within a minute. I mean, it takes you know, two or three minutes to do it, within a minute, it dries and we can have the kids back in class. And so those are all things and measures that we're taking, trying to make sure that we keep our kids in school as long as we can.
And I think it, it also goes to our, our staff and both teaching staff and non-teaching staff that to keep the buildings open in their personal lives as well, to be doing the right things, it's like, you know, it's not over. And, and, and I think a lot of people up in the world are feeling like, you know, well, it's coming to an end. But we're vaccinating people, but, but you know, we're not vaccinated that many, certainly not in Wisconsin. We're not vaccinating as many as there are in other states. But, but the point would be that we have to keep doing what we have been doing to keep our buildings open, to keep the education process going.
So, you know, and even Mary Jo would say that, I had a conversation with her today, one of our school nurses. And she said she had her first shot, even after you're vaccinated, you're still supposed to wear a mask. And, and so again, uh, doesn't mean that you still can't pass it on. And so I think it's important for people that can listen to what you just had to say, Brian, that we're still in the middle of a pandemic. Are we, hopefully, when we're getting towards the end, that would be great, but we're still in the middle right now.
So please share that information with parents and, and staff.
So, um, I, as many people, or people may not know, I don't know, but I have two high schoolers still. I have one who graduated from Shawnee, a couple years ago in college. But I have two high schoolers and my son is a senior. And he wants nothing more than to either, he, he would prefer to either just be virtual, which is not good for him as a parent, um, or be in person. And all he wants is to have a senior year where he has at least, he said, Mom, we at least have a few weeks where we just have regular school and we're all together. Because hybrid is a regular school. In his, you know, it's, it's, it's not, all his, all half his friends aren't there, so I get all that. Um, and I want nothing more than both of my children to be going to school every day. Here's my concern is I would echo what Kurt said because um, as I said currently in an elementary setting, if our classroom were to be exposed, that elementary class would go down, the teacher would go down, but we could just quarantine that classroom as a cohort. But if it goes down in a high school setting or at Parkview, that teacher teaches three or five or six other classes of students. So then when that teacher goes down or that group of students, uh, um, it's, it's just a different ballgame, right? Because it's not, it affects like exponentially who it affects. So that is my concern with Parkview because again, as I said, and I have been criticized and go ahead and criticize. So that is my concern with Parkview, because again, as I said, and I have been criticized and go ahead and criticize me. But I don't have luxury of just saying this is what my kid wants. I have to also look at all. That's what I feel being on the school board means. So when I just look at it in that way from my experience, I am concerned about the numbers that could be quarantined at the middle school and the high school. And a child that wants to be there every day, but now is missing all of their classes because one of their classes they were exposed at. And then teachers are trying to get them makeup work. I'm thinking logistically of how would it work if that happened to my daughter or my son? How, then how does that affect their educational experience? So that would be the only thing I would say. I'm, I'm not going to not send my kids if we go full-time. I think my children would probably be very happy to go back full-time. But I do think it's important to make the point that it is a different scenario than an elementary classroom would be. So I just think I need to make that point. It's different.
And so to go along with that, we have also, for the elementary parents listening in. We've also been methodical in our approach and in our conversations of what are the next steps we're going to take at the elementary level? You know, in regards to having kids go to encore classes versus the encore teacher coming to them, you know. Very methodical in how we take the next step in order to get back to somewhat normal in our approach. In regards to co-curriculars, all that kind of stuff. And so know that all of us are on our decision plate, we're having conversations about that. But it's very methodical in how we do it, because ultimately, we don't want to go back, right? We don't want to go back to us being completely remote. We want to continue moving forward. And continue to have our kids in person, because ideally, that's what we all want.
I think, Dirk, thank you very much for all the words that you said. You made up a very, very good points, especially from the equity piece. And I guess I am a little, obviously, a little more conservative. I am concerned about the slight uptick in the county. And I don't think that our school family lives in some sort of bubble where we're only dealing with our school family. We have people that work and live in other districts. We are all in the community. So when the community goes up, it has affected us. And so I would be more in favor of waiting two weeks after the second semester, just to see how this goes. Again, just to be more conservative and make sure that the numbers are not going up. And to again, be more sure that we're, we're on this, we stay at this path. Instead of doing two weeks hybrid, two weeks in-person, then what happens when, you know, if the numbers do go up, you know. But to be more on the same schedule for a little bit longer, just to make sure that the numbers are all trending in the right direction. And that we stay where we're at for another two weeks.
Yeah, I guess I would echo that as well. You know, I've definitely been on the record that, you know, I want kids in school, I want them back, you know, full-time. But I also have really liked, you know, how we opened it up in the hybrid configuration here. And I think we need to get a little bit, you know, far away from Christmas and New Year's. And then also three days doesn't make a very good trend. You know, so things are looking really well so far, but you know, we'll know more in another two, three weeks from now. And I think at that point in time, we'll have a better, you know, be better able to make a decision as far as when kids would actually come back full-time. What that would look like.
We're well past fourteen days past Christmas.
I was just going to say, we're way beyond the fourteen-day period.
We're well past that point.
There wasn't a spike after Thanksgiving and there doesn't appear to have been a spike since Christmas.
Well, the numbers have gone up though slightly. So you can't argue that the numbers are up, not to say that it'd be nice to get far away from New Year's. At least figure out what those numbers are and then see how that goes. You know, the model seems like it's working as well as it can be at this point. Three days doesn't make a very good trend, you know, that, you know, just to kind of see how this goes for a little longer.
We set out the criteria last time that if we were underneath our goals for student absences and teacher absences as far as a percentage. And our core indicator is that we should be in school. And we're not even close to those right now.
Right, that indicator, so for the thirty-three percent student absences, that's to go virtual or not virtual. That number doesn't very high. And that's fine to be that high, to go virtual, not virtual. But I'm not comfortable with that number being that high and going five days a week and having that many more kids quarantined.
We have eight percent of the rest of the students are absent right now, not thirty-three. That's not even close.
I'm just saying that.
I understand.
We have to close for another week or two before I would decide.
We open up on Monday and then, you know, it's just three days.
Well, this would actually be, I think, it would actually be the twenty-fifth, so it's not this Monday, it would be the following Mondays, the first day of the semester. Next week is actually finals, they only have three days of school. So we have this week of hybrid, like my children are only going four days.
So Monday is Martin Luther King Junior, so we don't have school there. Friday is the end of the semester, so teachers are preparing report cards and doing all that. So we have three days of school next week, actually two and a half, right Dirk, at the high school. And so to Paul, everyone's point, we have basically, we have five days this week and a couple of days. We want to give parents enough time to, I guess the only adjustment is, is no adjustment for elementary, elementary is already in. The adjustment would be six twelve. I'm making a decision next week, Tuesday, to say we are going to have everyone back on Monday or we continue with the hybrid. It's kind of what I'm here, right? And look at over the next seven, six, seven days and decide, it looks pretty good, let's give it a shot. And we start opening everybody, or we give it two weeks and say we're going to open on, two weeks would be February eighth, Monday, February eighth. Would be the day we bring everyone back, so.
When you talk to both of you, for Derek and Kurt, when you talk to these other districts, what percentage of states do they have quarantined? Did you, either of you get a feel for that when they were open full-time?
Well, they've been open full-time, most of them, all the time. Every district's a little bit different and I want to be careful not to say the districts publicly out loud. But some of the districts have, say they're open all the time, but they're creative in their scheduling, that they're only offering certain classes. And so one school district says they're open all the time, but they have only roughly about seventy percent, sixty-five to seventy percent of their student body in school. Because they're being creative in how they're scheduling some of their classes. And again, I don't want to speak too much to that because, well, give it away who that district is. But so they're doing creative ways of doing that. Their amount of quarantines, there's one school right now, one high school right now, that's twenty-seven in our area that are back full-time. Twenty-seven positive COVID kids right now. And, and so that then impacts, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred kids. So, you know, we're talking ten percent, fifteen percent or more that are on quarantine pretty consistently.
And up to thirty or more.
And again, we want kids in the building, we just want to be upfront.
Thirty or more percent of students.
We just want to be upfront that there's going to be more quarantine if we go at the secondary level, six, twelve. We're just going to have more kids in quarantine and we're going to have to adjust to that as families and as school. We want kids in person, trust me, we do, but we also want to be honest in what the schools who have been in person have dealt with.
So if we were to wait two additional weeks, can you assure us that things will be a hundred percent better? I don't think anybody can. So whether you start on January twenty-fifth or February twelfth, or whatever the date was. There's no, there is nothing, there is no magic to that. And waiting doesn't do anything.
So as long as.
And I'm not disagreeing, Brian, I'm just relating the facts.
So as long as parents do understand, because I just, I can see a scenario in my head where we have, we get back in. Which again, if we go back in then, like, I'm actually, I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm not too worried about these. I feel like the numbers are okay, like I'm not, that's not my, my thing is thinking about this educational continuity is what my concern is. So I can see them getting back in and then if we end up having kids just having the quarantine like flies all over the place. Then at what point do we say, yeah, this isn't working? Then do we have the option to say, you know what, we're losing too many, there's no continuity? Can we go back to a hybrid just to try to keep continuity again? I mean, can we do that if we, you know.
Well, and that was the whole purpose of our reopening plan, right? Our whole purpose was designing a plan, as you guys know, a lot of work went into this plan. And because we knew that there were going to be times throughout the school year that we were going to go back and forth between models, right? We also talked about the consistency of those models, that we want to make sure that we're not doing it a day here, a day there. Like we were saying, we're going to do it in at least two-week incremental chunks. That again, to us, from an educational background, right, and instructional background, we're concerned about that consistency piece. Maybe we'll open up and we won't counter quarantine that some of these other districts have. I don't know that. Maybe we are phenomenally rocking all the mitigation strategies that we can do. I don't know that. I think we do a really phenomenal job. Clearly, I share with some of the things that we're doing that doesn't seem like some of the other districts are doing, that are open, completely open. And so, yes, that's a chance, but I also know that we have to understand that there's a possibility of more kids quarantined.
Have we, can I ask a question Dirk? Have we, so have, like at the high school, look. I feel like at the high school, there are spaces that if you need to social, try to distance some classrooms a little bit more because they are smaller. I mean, some classrooms are small, like I taught in these classrooms where there's, I mean, it's small. And like you're pulling in another chair to fit the other kid in the classroom, you know. So I feel like there are some spaces at the high school, I personally worry a little more about Parkview because I feel like that building was more at capacity. They don't maybe have as much Google room, I'm not sure. But have you been able to kind of think outside the box in terms of if there are rooms that are just too small? That you could try to find other places for certain classes or has any of that thought gone into it at the high school?
Absolutely. We bumped, every place we could, we bumped this group into a slightly bigger room. And then that group into this room, and then that group into this room, so that, so that, you know, we've, we've. For instance, you all know the high school, up in the science wing, there's the room two seventy-eight, you know, that computer lab. It's a big room. We took all the computers out of there, it's now a mat room. Because, because it's big enough that we can fit, you know, fifteen to twenty students in there with our cohort model. And they're good six feet apart, it will be safer than if they were in, you know, Ms. Schneider's old classroom, which was that little tiny one at the corner, you all remember. And so we've been able to do that pretty well for this number of kids.
Kurt, can I, Jenny, can I add something to what you're bringing up right now?
Yeah, please, Chris.
One of our most significant concerns at the middle school would be our lunch periods. Upon our blended model return this time around, we have started to put overflow of students into our multipurpose room to eat lunch. If they're not comfortable eating lunch with four at a table with a seat in between. We have removed additional lunch tables from our cafeteria so that we're able to space the tables further apart from one another. Upon the return of all students, we would struggle with determining where to put students during lunch. A time when they don't have their masks on. Our gymnasium is used during all of our lunch periods, so that would not be an option. If we were to break our three lunch periods down into smaller, I'm sorry, into more lunch periods. We would be reducing the minutes of our classes in order to make that work. So I just want you to take that into consideration as you make the decision about how we would, how we would continue forward. Keeping people safe during their lunch period. And then similar to the high school, we've exhausted additional spaces to hold classrooms to. In the event that we had thirty kids back in a classroom at a time. Thank you.
Let's just have an action item tonight. The only other thing that we can do is come back next week.
Or you can just give it to me and say, Kurt, look at the numbers, the numbers aren't changing drastically, we're coming back second semester.
That would be my, that would be my point.
It's up to you guys. Not that I really want all that on my shoulders, but.
Well, and I think I go back to it, to wait two more weeks, what does that buy you? I mean, the pandemic's not ending. What it's here to say, kids are not doing as well in the, in the virtual world versus in-person. Kids are excited to be back.
Yep.
We're going to ask parents and staff, everyone, to continue doing what they've been doing, if not even more, to try to, to keep our buildings open. And I don't know what, what two more weeks does, what does that buy us? I mean, you could say two more years and it wouldn't matter. It's still, it could be out there two years from now, we don't know.
The only reason, Brian, and again, I'm not trying to imply, I'm giving you the fact. The reason two weeks was chosen was it provided an opportunity to get second semester off on a, on a right track, right? That we didn't have, we had a consistency of two weeks where those kids were going to have limited, maybe less quarantined. And we had a successful start to second semester. Because at the high school level, it's basically a brand-new school year, right? I think Dirk told me at one time, it's like eighty percent or more of all brand-new classes. And so it's an opportunity to, it's like starting in the fall, second semester for a high school. And so we wanted two weeks to be able to get it up and running and have success and do that. You're right, Brian, there is no guarantee, right?
So I have a question then for Dirk. So if, let's say you have kids start the second semester in class and they end up coming off. And because of quarantine, they need to be virtual. Can you explain how their day is structured then? What are they, they're not going to the full virtual model, they're, they're planning to come back fourteen days later. So can you explain how their day is structured then?
Sure. Are you, and just so I understand, so I can answer the question. Are you talking about a model in which we are cohorted every other day? Or are you talking about the everyday life? Okay, you bring up a good point. I'm going to give a little bit of a roundabout answer. With our cohorted model, teachers are planning for both scenarios. So it's relatively easy for a student who is quarantined to hook into that remote model. That student would miss things like in-building labs and some of the in-person experiences. But still we have daily connect with a teacher, Google classroom activities, all the things that the home cohort would be doing. If we pursued a full, everyday, in-person, all-students-in-building, we would forego that other model. Because we wouldn't consistently know whether it would be zero or one or thirty students who might need those services. So it's hard for a teacher to plan for two full classes that way unless we know who the students are in a consistent model. So those students would be quarantined for fourteen days, kind of like how it would happen in years past. You know, if you, if you were out for fourteen days with a significant injury. Teachers have to punt and figure things out and let some things go and try to establish what are the really essential things. And that works okay with a cold or a regular flu or strep throat when you're gone for a day or two. But you're right, for fourteen days, that's a long time for the teacher to have to scramble and the student to have to scramble. And the student to have to figure it out and make things up afterward. In that consistency model, when I was talking about earlier with Mike, that's, that's one of the concerns. Is that districts that are fully in-person have had to fight with, you know, students who are gone in fourteen days at a time. Hopefully only once, but in some cases, two, three, four times over a course of the year. Are constantly in that sort of traditional. Are constantly in that sort of traditional, when you and I had to call in sick kind of.
So they, they, they are quarantined, the teacher's going to give them the work. And they're going to do it on their own for fourteen days.
That's, that's, that's sort of the, that's. We haven't come up with a model for what to do with students that we can't predictably know at, at home. So that's, that's the best guess that we have right now. Yeah.
But we have the technology that we, we can still meet with them. Maybe not daily, but every other day kind of situation for that teacher to, to meet with those kids on a virtual basis.
Yeah, certainly we've, uh, we've had that model now, you know, we're in that mode, right? We're in that Google mode. The hard part from the teaching standpoint is. They just don't know, right? It could be one today, Jay today, tomorrow it's fifteen kids, right? And so that mode of trying to, trying to keep all that straight. Uh, from a teacher's standpoint of, okay, I've forgotten how Paul's, Paul was quarantined today. Well, he might be, um, back tomorrow where Jay's out for the next two weeks, right?
I mean, well, okay, so what I'm frustrated with is we go back to December eleventh. And we planned for this day. And now all of a sudden, it's like, well, we're not, we're not prepared for this. We don't have a plan for how we're going to teach kids that are quarantined. How can that be? I mean, I feel like that's, that we're, we didn't do anything for the last month to prepare for this.
Well, I would say, I wouldn't say that, Brian, but I would say. Our investigation certainly showed, from talking to these other schools, that, that this has been an ongoing issue for them.
Sure.
And so as we've had conversations with them, they said, just be upfront, that you're going to have more quarantine, you're going to have more things. Doesn't mean that we can still provide some of the Google meets, but we're asking teachers to do not a lot, just like the other school districts are doing. Just to understand that.
Absolutely, absolutely. But that, the question is still, if you waited two weeks, two months, two years, is it going to be any different? And the answer is probably not. So. So if we haven't come up with a way to deal with, with ten, fifteen, twenty percent. Kids off quarantine, then I think we've got ten days to do it until the start of that second semester.
And, and we don't know this, right, guys? We're, we're, we're trying to utilize the data. And the experience from our colleagues who have been in person, right, all along. And we don't know that we're going to experience large numbers of quarantine. We, we don't have it, we may not, right? And so right now, we're, we're basing it on the information of what we've investigated and found out. We might find that we have a limited amount of quarantine and then everything is going pretty well.
Do all the other schools, do they do the fourteen day quarantine period? Are they all doing that?
Well, fourteen days, remember there's weekends in there too, guys, so it's not.
Yeah, I mean, they're all.
Everybody was going to shift like we did, right, to the ten day. It seems like everyone now has shifted back to the fourteen day.
So now this has worked a little different.
Yeah.
Not the full fourteen day, at least some of them are.
And is it correct to say that they can't be, you know, doing Google meets or Zooms into those classes? If they're out, so if they're quarantined for fourteen days and they're, and they're.
Drastic, like live streaming, right?
Sure, so, yeah, live streaming.
It really, really is, is, is so dependent on, on content and course and honestly, the lesson of that day. You know, our, the computers that we have, the microphones, the cameras, everything are, are designed for like a Google meet, like a one-on-one, not, not. You know, a multi-directional mic in a live setting. So depending on what you teach, sure, you might be able to do a Google meet for a little while, but again, think about. If you have one kid on quarantine and twenty-four in the classroom, someone's got to lose out on that focus.
Sure, but, but that's got to be better than saying, recheck.
But, but I would say this.
See you in fourteen days.
But as you've been in our classrooms, you know, the, the, the number of small collaboration and live labs and work, it, it, it's just not, it's not the same level. It's just not, it's just not. So, so sure, but in the, in the hybrid model, teachers are equally planning. For both scenarios because they have both scenarios. It's going to be the unknown and the potential for endless planning that may never come to fruition. You know, and so it, it's, it's, it's time and, and, and figuring out what works. I mean, our, our, you know, in, in many of our classes, like culinary tech ed. That's going to be very, very hard to do. Uh, even in all of our science classes, that's going to be very, very hard to do. In certain classes, sure, you can do a mini lesson for five, six minutes, but then. How are you going along to have like math conversations with small groups, but then also giving that student equitable time on, on, on the call? It's, it's, it's possible, but it's, it's just very difficult to do without burning people out.
I think they're going to have, parents and students will just have to know that if they are quarantined, I mean, there is going to be some loss there. Like there's no, but there's. There would be no way, like you couldn't possibly teach. All day and then know what, you know, I have these kids here and these kids here and these kids there and. I have to do, like to what they're saying, like if, if, there's not enough hours in the day, like I can say as a teacher, like literally there's not enough hours in the day. So if that's the case, so I think that some things could work. I mean, for sure, in certain classes, I can imagine certain subjects, um, at Parkview and at the high school, that they could still do that. Short Google meet in the beginning, because a lot of these, a lot of lessons aren't mini lessons. I know some parents may think that you get lectured to all hour, but that's not how education really is anymore. So they are mini lessons. You get your ten minutes and then it's off you go to, to work, but then a lot of that is collaboration and things like that. So. Um, I think in some classes, the fourteen days would be doable for a teacher to enough, be able to touch base with those kids. And then I think in other classes, they'll just, they will miss out on more and it probably determines what classes they're taking and what. What level of class they're taking and which classes they're taking and how, you know, how active they are and that kind of stuff. I think, and I think people will just have to go into this knowing that this is, this is what we start and then this, this is a possibility, right? This may be what. What it is and, and what you may have to deal with, so.
But we're going to have to deal with it in one way or another. We're, we're going to have to deal with it. We can't just put our hands where it stands enough. It's not going to go away.
No, and, and I agree with that. And as I would say, like, I think if I push for continue hybrid, probably my own kids will be angry at me because they would love nothing more than to be back. Every single day in school, absolutely. So I'm just saying that I think it's really important that not only we here, but. I don't know how to get it, like, that parents need to understand this is a possibility because. On the same note, I think we have seen some office staff be just erated with people who are frustrated, like, oh, that their kids being quarantined or their. And this is just so that we know what we're looking at. And we'll be looking at it now, or to your point, maybe in two weeks. We probably will do the same thing. So it's not that, it's just more the understanding of what it is we're agreeing to and what the. What it may really look like, I guess.
Or it may just look like we're doing right now.
It may.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Kurt, I think it's important, like you said, in your communication, just let the parents know and what the other districts have told you to, just kind of inform the parents that. Be aware that these situations could come up. And if you do have to quarantine, like you're saying, that, that it will be a little bit different. We'll do our best and we'll continue to find ways to improve, but it could be. A little bit more limited than being in the class full time.
And, and I know there's a lot of people listening in, uh, which is great. But we can't emphasize that point all enough, right, that we really need everyone's help. We really need people to be respectful of our office staff when they call to say their child has to be quarantined. Or the child has a fever and the child has to go home. That we need to work together. Uh, we all want kids in school, we want kids in school. The last three days have been phenomenal, seeing the kids in school. We all want that. We want that in our heart. You get, you get the energy from the kids. But we need everyone to work together. We need our parents to be cooperative and, and helpful, um, in that process. They've been phenomenal, they've been great, we appreciate everything they've done. They've really stepped it up. We've asked a lot of them, we know that, we clearly know that. But we really need your help now. We're all going to work, open up, we're going to open up, we need to do it together. And, and we need everyone to help, um, that process. Because these people who are calling now are just doing their job. Right? Our nurses, our health aides, our office staff, we're calling, they're just doing their job. And so it's unfair to be not kind when they call and understand that they're just doing their job and. They want the best for your child too. And again, parents have been phenomenal and great. Uh, we feel very blessed to have the parents that we do, but we're in this together.
Brian, can I, can I, um, respond to, to your comment earlier? I'm not sure you and I understood each other quite, quite, quite well when you asked the question and I gave my response. My response is not that we've done nothing.
I, I chose my words incorrectly.
And, and what we've done, um, and, and what we'll end up doing is using bits and pieces of this remote model that we worked really hard to create. Um, for students who are quarantined. What we can't do, and this is what I was trying to say, what we can't do is plan big picture in terms of. Essential standards, curriculum, scope and sequence of the course, uh, the way we could, uh, when we knew we were, were there the other day because. You know, I don't know in this student's case if that, if that scenario would start a day from now or two days from now or never. Or if one student or ten students or a student with significant needs or a student who's advanced, the way we could do that big picture. I mean, maybe that makes a little better sense.
It does.
And they, the, the skills and techniques that we've used for remote instruction are what we're going to do with students who are quarantined. However, we've also shown you some pretty well-developed plans for how we're going to do our in-person days and in-person days and things like that. That kind of a document I can't really give you because it's somewhat individualized based on the timing and the student and the numbers and stuff like that. Is that, is that?
It, that, that helps. And, and I guess I would, I would just say we've got, you know, eighty-five percent of the parents are, are. Choosing to send their kids to school. And the numbers are lower than they were in December when we, uh, when we first started talking about them. So why would we not? And, and to arbitrarily say, well, if we wait two more weeks, it might be all better. You know, I, I just don't buy that. Then I think we're going to still be living with this maybe a year from now.
Yeah, I, I, Brian, let me be clear on that. We weren't saying waiting two weeks because we think it's going to be better. We were waiting two weeks because we wanted the consistency for these, for the second semester. So just be clear on that. We all agree that we don't necessarily think that this is going to be gone tomorrow, right? I, I don't think anybody has that in mind. But we were hoping for a consistency for second semester. Maybe we won't have any issues and we just start second semester and we give it a shot. And I'm okay with that. But, so right now, from what I'm hearing is you guys are asking me to kind of watch the data. Right now, we're starting second semester, everyone back. Is that basically what I'm hearing? That was what?
Yes, that's what you're hearing from me. I, and I don't want to speak for the others.
I guess my only point is that three days doesn't make a very good strength.
Right.
And so it, uh, you know, to see the numbers with the, you know, the, the students, the percentage of students being now with staff, you know, et cetera. It'd be nice to have a few more days behind that. And that was my only point.
Just Paul, just to cut that, you mean three days because we've only been back in school for three days.
We've only been back to school three days.
Right.
So who knows what these numbers will look like in a week, but.
So right now, just so I'm clear, because I'm, I'm, we're for you guys. We are going to watch the numbers unless there's some huge drastic numbers change in student absences, staff absences. Or we have a huge uptake with our, our coordinator one, we are coming back second semester. Six twelve, because our elementary is already there. Six twelve, everyone, every day. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we're moving to action items. Um, policies, we'll go put a role in second reading. Is there any questions on these? Can we get a motion real quick with that?
I'll second.
Motion second, all favor.
Vandy Creek tie.
Consonant.
Bailey and I.
Just get your eye.
Eric and I.
Um, open enrollment guarantees. So this is something we need to approve every year. Basically, what we're recommending is that the board approve guaranteeing. An open enrollment seat for students currently attending. So when you look at the next item, when we start looking at open seats. Those students are already included in a, having taken a seat. So, so we're just saying, if they're already here, we're guaranteeing they're going to have a seat and they're not going to have to go and reapply. And then the second thing is we're not, we're, we're recommending that you do not guarantee incoming siblings. So siblings that aren't attending here yet, we're not guaranteeing them a seat. They get included with the other applicants that they have a priority. First preference, but if we wouldn't have open seats, like for example, last year at the middle school, we didn't have open seats. A sibling couldn't come in. And, and start in middle school because we have no open seats. But if we have open seats, they get priority over new applicants. But they don't, they're not guaranteed. Okay, this is the same as we approved the last.
Is there something in here though that, so it's, it's, they're guaranteed, but. Oh, and I can't find it now.
True, it's, it's.
But if there are tardy issues or absentee issues, then that.
Correct.
Okay.
True, and that's any student we. The truancy we.
I wanted to clarify that.
In that sense of the recommendation, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I was trying, I know I haven't read it, but I. With kindergartners all day, so I.
Okay, we'll get a motion to approve this.
But once the siblings in, if there is a spot, then they're in.
Once, once someone's in, they're in. They don't have to apply.
Correct, that's a fact.
This is a day difference.
So you get a motion. They need to be handled separately. I think you can approve both recommendations at the same time.
Did we talk about them?
Two, if you're talking to approve.
We're doing the opening.
Two and action three. Together, is that correct? Are you saying we can do that?
No, I thought we were just.
No, no, you're, you're two, there's two.
Yeah, we're just on two.
There's two recommendations. So you're guaranteeing if they're already here and you're not guaranteeing siblings.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep. So I, I move to approve action item two, let's present it.
Second.
Okay, your motion is second, all favor.
We should do five, yeah.
Vandy Creek tie.
Consonant. Bailey and I.
Just get your eye.
Eric and I.
Okay. And now open enrollment, open seats. Come on.
Open seating, now open seats, yeah.
Okay, number, and second?
I'll second it.
Okay, get a motion second, all favor.
Vandy Creek tie. Consonant. Bailey and I.
Just get your eye.
Eric and I.
Okay, motion carries. Open enrollment, open seats, special education, Amy, if you joined us.
I've been sitting in the back, listening, listening from afar. Thank you. Um, for the open seats for next school year, um, I ran all of the numbers and did a ratio analysis. We will have no open seats at Cormier, Pioneer, Valley View, the high school and at, that. At our Ashwabanon Challenge Program. We will have three open seats in sixth grade at Parkview and three open seats in seventh grade. Based on the caseload numbers at the eighth grade level, it's much higher, so we are not opening any seats at the eighth grade level at Parkview.
Is that a certain category?
No, I can't specify by category. So nope, it's just nothing at eighth grade and then I'm open to anything. Um, for. The three seats at sixth grade and the three at seventh, seventh grade. Except, there is an exception to that when you say categories. Um, Civil Hop, any students that would have alternative curriculum or need, um. Any kind of Civil Hop services, we are not open to IEPs that have those services because that's a contracted service and you have to live. Within the Ashwabanon School District. So students, for example, who are open enrollment to Green Bay. Or, or from Green Bay here or who attend, um, districts outside of Brown County are not eligible to attend Civil Hop. So we will not accept any type of IEPs that would, um, require Civil Hop services. We will also not accept any IEPs that have contracted services. Some of those examples could be certain students require. Mott Village Advocates, Residential Treatment, CISA programs for hearing and vision services. Anything that we would have to contract and add services for that we currently don't have, any IEPs that indicate that we would not be accepting at the sixth or seventh grade level. Are there any questions about any of that?
Hey, I was just curious, this is the first time in a while that we've been able to add open enrollment seats.
It is. Um, we had a number of. It is, it is. And we've had a number of, I, last year, we had over fifty special ed students leave our district. For, you know, moving out of state. I mean, it was just an anom- anomaly that doesn't typically happen. So, um, staffing wise, we were looking at, should we reduce or shouldn't we? And I said, you know, let's see how it plays out. Then COVID hit and it's like, okay. We can't reduce now because we don't know where things are going to be, right? So, um, this school year, we looked at our numbers and we've lost some other kids, um, primarily at the middle school level again. And I just can't justify the, um, the staffing ratios and not adding some spots there. We are looking at, even though we're adding these spots, we are going to be at this point. Probably reducing one FTE in special ed at Parkview also, along with adding these spots. So, yeah. It's, it's interesting as you watch the numbers and how they shift. So, so we'll see what happens.
You have a question? We get a motion to approve?
I move to approve action item number four.
I moved to approve action item number four as presented.
Second.
Okay. All favor.
Vandy Creek tie.
Transcend.
Vandy and I.
Districtal eye.
Eric and I.
Okay, motion carries. Orders to depend communications.
So I just had one. Nick Singer and I received an email from a W I official who officiated our girls' game, I think actually, last night. And said, just was very impressed with how our coaches and our students handled themselves in sportsmanship. They really represented Ashwabanon with class. It was just a very glowing email about our girls' basketball program and girls' basketball players, and so just want to acknowledge that.
Awesome. Kurt, out of curiosity, have we had any, or Dirk, I guess, have we had any issues with the winter sports? Our co-curriculars that have been going on since December with COVID?
Yeah, we've had some of our athletes test positive. We've had them quarantine. Different members of different programs are launching let out, but to remain confidentiality. But we've had different programs that had to miss events. Or other schools have, so we've had to cancel events because of other schools as well. But we've had some quarantines within our student athletes and coaches as well, so. But certainly working through it. Our coaches and students are doing a phenomenal job. As I said earlier, it was really neat to see our parents in there cheering on our student athletes, other than just the pictures of people hanging on the string line for the fans. It was nice to have people in the gyms cheering, and so just a great approach. As super tenants, we are going to come back next week at our weekly meeting and talk about whether we're going to open that conference up to opposing parents for events. Right now, it's just home events. So anywhere in the FRCC, it's just all parents can attend the event, not the opposing team's parents. Next week, Tuesday, we're going to look at expanding that possibly to allowing both sides of parents. So we tickets for parents, you know.
So now the plan is, is March and April, if all sports are participating?
Right, yeah.
Well, swimming starts February eighth. So girls' swimming starts, it's a little earlier even, that you're supposed to be in the fall. So I think it just depends on the sport.
Yeah, every sport's a little bit different. I think volleyball might be in February twenty-seventh or something like that.
Yeah, some of these things, of course, depend on whether they're indoor sports or outdoor sports or things like that. So there's some staggering of the length of season and things like that. But yeah, the idea is to, as winter sports wrap up, start fall sports. And then as fall sports allow, do spring starts, spring starts.
Okay. A busy spring for Mr. Singer and our coaches.
It's a busy.
Okay, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, February tenth, here in Mr. Costa. We can both go, Dirk?
So.
Second, voice call.
Vandy Creek tie.
Transcend.
Vandy and I.
Districtal eye.
Eric and I.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.